For added information, Chuck has some information on the word for minister used in governmental fashion.
A person serving as an agent for another by carrying out specialized orders or function, a person authorized to perform... A high officer of state appointed to head an executive or administrative department of government, a person authorized to represent his government in diplomatic dealings with other governments, usually ranking next below an ambassador.
How do you like that? And in our case, he elevated us and said, "We're not below ambassadors, we are ambassadors." So we are, in each of our individual embassies, we are the top person.
In our embassy.
In our embassy, because it's God and Christ in each one of us. So, we function, we understand it more, you know, we function as ministers, as one who runs to serve. Now, back to what we were talking about. You are made righteous in Christ Jesus now. So there's a point to that, being made righteous. Interesting that God always does something for a reason. Also, I was working, when we were working on what the benefits were, you know, in God's program, the giver always gets blessed. So, you know, even with my little mini tirade there about who has taken up the charge of the things that were done and the giving that was done regarding learning how to run a business, or do a public company, or radio, or whatever. One thing is for sure, I certainly got blessed, because I was the giver. There's always tremendous benefit to the giver. And that's what we were looking, that's what I was looking for in the ambassador. The ambassador has a job to do. And the point of the ambassadorship, or of diplomatic community, is not privilege, but expediency. However, the result is still privilege. It's still a privilege to be able to park where you want, when you need to run in somewhere. See, right now, as a non-ambassador, for example, you might have something that needs to be done, that's expediency, you know, that needs to be done expeditiously. But you don't have the privilege of doing that. Because you get a ticket, that you have to pay, eventually. Whereas an ambassador, he runs in, leaves his car, he has the privilege of doing that, even the purpose should be expediency, to carry out the needs, desires, will of the government he represents. But he still has the privilege of doing that. If he didn't, he'd have to park at the end of the parking lot, or circle for hours in New York, looking for a place to park. Or conversely, park in one of these places where they stick you up on a rack, charge you fifty bucks for being in there for five minutes. "Well, it's fifty bucks, whether you're going here for five minutes or an hour, it's fifty bucks." "Or a day, it's fifty bucks." I went through that, going to New York, getting charged a ridiculous amount of money, to have my car parked there for ten minutes. Because you're parking on the street and you... So anyway, the ambassador has some privilege then. It's pri... The point, though, is to get the job done. But the sec... But the benefit still to the ambassador is it's still a privilege to be able to just park right there, walk right in, get what you gotta get done, and walk back out. It's a privilege. Even though that's not the point. Same with us. We have privileges, benefits that we enjoy, even though that's not the point of why we have them. Everything we have is so that we can operate, and then have benefits both now and throughout all eternity. That is really something. Well, you know, obviously, speaking in tongues, for example, when we speak in tongues, we worship God, and that's what God wants, worship. But even speaking in tongues, even Holy Spirit, there's a point that we can worship God, that we can spend all eternity with God, that we have the potential for fellowship. I mean, the point is so that, real point, is so that God has this wonderful family, you know, the mystery, purpose of the ages, all that stuff, that we worship God and fellowship with God, that's the real big deal. But now, we know we have that, so He's given us all these things, righteousness. I'm trying to get what comes of that. The question is, are you willing to stand upon what God says and act upon it? So God says you're righteous, God, which means you've got no sin, no guilt, no condemnation, no frustration, no fear. God says you're righteous. Are we willing to act upon it, stand on what He says and act upon it? Act upon our righteousness. God says we're righteous, so we act upon our righteousness, so this is coming up to me. God says we're justified, so we act upon that justification. God says we're sanctified, set apart for heaven, all hell can't stop us from going, set apart for God, His family, so we act upon our sanctification. God says we're redeemed, so we stand and act upon that redemption. So here He says that. "You were redeemed, made righteous, justified, and sanctified in Christ Jesus so that you could minister as a believer." That would be a purpose clause now, wouldn't it? So you see what happens if you don't minister as a believer then? All those things that were given for that purpose become null and void. Otherwise, God could have done it a different way. The moment you're born again, boop, you're out of here. "Where am I?" "Oh, you're in heaven now." "Really?" "Yeah." He could have done it lots of ways, but He did it in such a way that, okay, now, go get another kid of mine, go reconcile somebody. Have some fun, reconcile. Tell them how great I am. "How are you gonna do that?" "Well, you're gonna have to have a great time with your daddy, you gotta love your country. If you don't support your country, are they gonna make you an ambassador?" Unless you're a really good faker. And they check you out as an ambassador, don't they? You bet they do. They check your background, your family's background. Do you vote? Who did you vote for, when did you vote? You know. Are you in debt? Are you tied in with a mob, whatever? I mean, it's... Because you are going to represent the United States of America in another country. They really scrutinize you, with a fine-toothed comb. "Well, God checked us out, and He said, 'You know what, I'm picking you to be an ambassador.'" "You were reconciled by..." "You were reconciled by Christ to God, and given the ministry and word of reconciliation." You know, we got the policy. We have the ministry, the office, and we were given the policy. Use it as a son of God. Man, it's awesome. Use it as a son of God. The possibilities there are pretty vast, aren't they, Chuck? When you start thinking about the privileges that this guy had, that you hung out with, to get, and I don't know how much he was doing, but the point of it was to get stuff done for his country. He was an ambassador to where? Bet you kinda think that's a neat place, after seeing this guy.
Sure, now.
Yeah. Argentina, boy, that must be a cool place. So if someone says, "Argentina, that place stinks," you're kinda like, "Well, I knew a guy from Argentina, and, you know, we had a great time. I loved hanging out with that guy." Pretty cool stuff, man. Now what about us? Are we ambassadors? Argentina?
No.
Boy, what could that mean? To stand on that and use it, what could that mean? Lot of stuff, man. Think about it today.
Well, we already see that, because we see that the time we spend, uh, let's say finding out what we need to know to do the representation, to establish the power base, God handles things for us. He puts things together for us. He takes care of our concerns when we're bringing to Him. When we pray and we believe, you know, Father, this is why I need to happen. And it happens. Because our ultimate goal is to get other people to the point where, yeah, to handle things for God, so God handles things for us. So while we're out representing our country, maybe we don't have time... Okay, well, maybe it's a bigger concern for us to represent our country, heaven, God. So the thing that... When we put time into God, and we don't put time into ourselves, God handles the things that we need Him to handle when it comes to ourselves. Everything from our health, to our finances, to, you know, our protection and... Because our focus is on becoming, you know, not becoming, our focus is on being ambassadors.
Yeah, there is an expediency issue, isn't there? It's what you say in the... I hear you, man. Time, you know, time, okay. That's again why certain of these laws, these ambassadors don't deal with, because of time. Expediency, you know, which Evelyn mentioned speed, and she was right, there is a part of expediency that speed is involved in. You need to get things done in a shorter period of time. So unlike the regular citizens, you can't ride around looking for a parking spot for an hour, when you've gotta get some document in right away. Same with us. We have to get things done, so we need, as ambassadors, you know, that's the... But the point comes back to God, you know, being totally just and absolutely smart, and knowing our hearts, knows whether we're wanting to do something, uh, just for privilege or for expediency. Now, He's also our Father, so there's stuff He does for us, and just fun and cool and neat. But boy, when we grow up and we go, "Hey, God, I'm ready to represent." "Great, well, you've been an ambassador since you got born again." And you go, "Yeah, I know, but I'm ready to really do this thing." Boy, a whole nother realm has to open up. Talk about our sonship rights. Not only do we rely on our sonship rights, but it solidifies our... It helps to solidify our sonship rights, being ambassadors, and actually functioning in our ministry of reconciliation. And the application solidifies the concept. Because that's why we have it. I mean, He knows all this stuff already, that it would tie in, that that would help to solidify all our sonship rights. And just the opposite occurs as you start to not really be an ambassador. Really functioning, you're always an ambassador, but the function as an ambassador changes up on you. Where you start, see? Most believers are still sin conscious, why? Wild stuff, man. Really cool stuff. I'm excited about this today.
That's the reversal. You know, the ambassador from Argentina that's in the United States goes by the Argentinian program, so to speak. But when he goes back to Argentina, he can go by the United States program?
No, when he goes back to Argentina, he's an Argentinian, subject to the laws of Argentina. He has no special... Yes, he's an ambassador, so he's still special. But everyone else there is an Argentinian citizen, just like he is.
That's why I call an ambassador two. It's a two thing, another area.
Now, he might function in the min... You know, he may have an office there, Ministry of Reconciliation, but there's no one to reconcile in Argentina.
Yeah, they're already there.
They're already there. So it's just another... But when he goes now, he's different than the other people. He's not a U.S. citizen, he's an Argentinian ambassador. Which puts him in a position not superior to a U.S. citizen, uh, in that sense. Again, he has diplomatic community, so he can get things done for his country. Doesn't mean, and we don't use it as a thing to be seized, it's still, we use it to get the job done. Just as Jesus Christ, we're supposed to have, you know, the Word gives us, "Okay, now in operating that ministry, here's some things to realize. Have these thoughts which are also in Christ Jesus, who being in a form given to him by God, thought it not robbery, thought it not a thing to be seized, to be equal to God." So we don't look at it that way either. "Okay, I'm an ambassador, I'm just gonna walk all over everybody. I'm gonna deliberately find laws to break, because I'm not gonna get a ticket. So I'm gonna just start, you know, I gotta go to a concert, I'm just gonna park here." They told me, they'll be sorry they did, all that kinda stuff. That's not our, how we operate. We operate, we use it so that we can serve, and that's how the other ambassadors are supposed to operate for service. To show a good example, you know, to the people of the country they represent. We don't always, they don't always do it, we don't always do it either. But that is really the point. We don't utilize it as something to be abused, using people, seized, is that word, uh... It's rapacious, it's, uh... Are we just taking and using stuff because we're sons of God, or because we're ambassadors? No. But when expediency, you know, we're running a class, we're doing something for God, I had to get down to the keys, so I drove way past the speed limit to get there, because things would happen along the way, or even when you plan to be there. So boom, and God took care of that. Now you gotta go, you're going on the keys, and you have no purpose to be there, to speed, and you just speed anyway. You have no reason to do this or do that, and you just do it anyway. Then it becomes a different thing. Then it becomes abusive privilege. It's really something. As using this world and not abusing it, where was that? We read that last, uh... As using the things of this world but not abusing them, that was, uh... The last time.
What, Galatia?
I wonder where it was? I can look up abusing. I think you guys might have it in your notes. It came up while we were studying this stuff on focus and distraction. Yeah, uh, 1 Corinthians 7:31, Anacson 1 Corinthians 9:13, which we handled.
Which is where we are, well.
Right, where we were. Yeah, abuse. To use over much, hence to abuse. We use the things of this world, we don't use them over much, because we're from another country. It's something, boy. That's all I have to share this morning. I'm, now, I'm really still hungry about this ambassador thing. I've studied it all on and off through the years, and I'm hungry, and now... We learned some things, Evelyn, remember, from, uh, Mark Hite. I'd like to talk to him again, and maybe record some things, when he was hanging out, spending time with an ambassador, uh, from, I think, Monaco or one of those countries, who was tied in closely with England or whatever. And man, the background, that's another privilege, the information. The policy information, the background information from our country. You know, you know things, special things, that you need to know to... So you're, you stay on top of what's going on in the United States. You don't wanna be an ambassador and be surprised when the United States declares war on their country, or the United States... So there's another privilege, you have advanced information. Intimate information of the...
Highest.
Of the highest order, right. Of the policies of your country. Dr. Werr will handle it so well in the class, and so did I, because I did it the same way he did it. You know, you're an ambassador, so you got that old top hat. No, you don't. If the President calls you to be an ambassador, you get all the neighbors, you have a big party, uh... Well, that's it for now. More on who we are, what we are, what we're supposed to do, later.
Test, test, test.
Okay, here we are. On July the 8th, 2003, Garland Harris, Evelyn Harris, and?
Chuck Harris.
Chuck Johnson. Uh, we are in the same family, though, the family of God and the household of God. And, um, it's my 19th wedding anniversary today, uh, of being married to my lovely wife, Evelyn. And it's my 20th year graduating from the Way Corps. Service in Christian ministry, actually about seven years before that I started to serve, but as, uh, as, you know, a minister, graduating from the Way Corps, it was, well, 20 years ago. So that would have been 1983, right? Something like that. Yep, I was reading a book last night, till about 2 o'clock in the morning. 2, 2, something, 2:30, something like that. About, uh, this gentleman, Jerry Spence. At home, at work, in court, everywhere, every day, how to argue and win every time. This is a runaway national bestseller. Eighteen weeks on the New York Times Bestseller List. Jerry Spence is a, an attorney, a criminal attorney. Not only criminal, but a criminal attorney who never lost a criminal case in, let's see, how many years of trying him? I believe it was, uh, over 20 years, I don't remember how many years here. No, he wasn't the one that, uh, that did OJ, he covered that though, for the news or something. But yeah, never lo... Never lost a criminal case, that's impressive. Unfortunately, the gentleman has, uh, has some anger against God, and thinks he's really his own God, which is an argument he will certainly lose someday. I was thinking about what the Word says about, "Every knee shall bow, every tongue shall confess that Jesus Christ is Lord, to the glory of God the Father." You can either confess it now, or you can confess it later. But somewhere, somewhere, uh, one way or the other, you're gonna confess Jesus Christ is Lord, period. So Jerry, you could do it now, or you can do it later, you can let your anger of God go. Stop arguing against God, you can't win that argument, no matter how good you are in court. So, anyway. But he had some tremendous things to share regarding power. Of course, again, he's got this whole chip about what a man says, about absolute power corrupting absolutely, and ascribes that to God. So how do you like that? A man says something, he decides to believe man, that power corrupts, and absolute power corrupts absolutely, and then he goes, "And that applies to man or God." And then he moves on with his statement. So you use, here's, this is real great argument here, right? You use a statement from man, from man, and ascribe that to God. Why not use statements from God and ascribe those to man? Wouldn't that make more sense? The pistol that fires in both directions, understanding power. The lock, "I am not a powerful person. Those I face are always more powerful than I, how can I win against them?" The key. "All power, yours and theirs, is yours." Now, he has some points here that are good. And when applied within the realm, the context of the accuracy of the Word, it's tremendous, it's a tremendous renewed mind principle. The secret source of power, "When I argue, I face power, the power of the other, whoever the other is. It is the other's power that I wish to overcome and that I fear. I am therefore fascinated by power, and I wish to trace its source. If I understand power, if I understand its nature and where it abides, if I understand how to get it and how to resist it, I will obtain great power of my own. I want power, I need power to win." What is power? "The power peculiar to each of us is that force that distinguishes each of us from all other beings. Our power permits us to grow and to fulfill our potential. It is the surf, the swell, the wave, the storm we feel in our veins that prevails, that propels us into action. It is our..." Here he uses the word creativity, scratching. "It is our innovation, innovativity." That's a word, isn't it? "It is our joy, our sorrow, our anger, our pain. This energy is our personhood. The extraordinary mix of traits and talents and experience that makes up the fingerprint of our souls." That's as far as he can go, is soul life power, which can be very powerful, but that's as far as Jerry here can go. "This power belongs to us and only us. Although there is a bountiful source supply of power for each of us, it is nonetheless a precious thing, it ought not be wasted. It must never be abused, else it will come back to destroy us. It can never be abdicated or denied, else we will have lost our very selves in the process." Understanding how power works. Power is first an idea, first a perception. The power I face... The power I face is always the power I perceive. This is very interesting. Especially when applied to the adversary. Because the Word has told us what regarding the adversary's power? It's useless against us, he has no power against us. He's been defeated, he's been defeated, so the...
Wasn't his defeated.
Wasn't his defeated? So the power that he has against us is only if we perceive it, only if we accept it, only if we allow it to exist in our minds, because it does not exist for us otherwise. Now, it exists against other people, people that are in his kingdom, but we have been rescued from the power of darkness. Kingdom, remember the exercise or operative influence of darkness. We have been rescued, delivered, snatched out of that from the brink of disaster. And we are in the kingdom of God. So God's power is the only power we recognize. Other, the other is just an annoyance that we handle with the Word of God, which is the javelin of the Spirit, or with the name of Jesus Christ, which is our power of attorney. Now, if Christians don't recognize that power, they will surely be defeated, whether they're Jerry Spence or not, whether they perceive it or not. The reason they get defeated by the adversary's power, including Jerry, is because they don't perceive that there is an adversary. Now, that's an interesting thing. Because since Satan really has no power over the believer, when, if a Christian really believed in the power of God and didn't know about the adversary, and walked according to the principles of the power of God, they could still defeat the adversary. But unfortunately, if they don't know about his slyness and his subtleness, and how he works on the mind to usurp that power by tricking people in their minds, then they still, even though they, they don't recognize that there's an adversary, they still become overcome by his power, because he gets to their minds. It's a real tricky thing. You know what I'm talking about? There are Christians that don't recognize there's an adversary at all, so you'd go, "Well, well, if they don't recognize it, then they wouldn't succumb to his power." Except, he's a... That's right, the influence. He has a great argument. He's moving things in the world, and when people go by their senses, they get influenced, and then his power can overcome them, even though they don't recognize that they're even as a devil that exists. They're already influenced, because they don't recognize it, therefore they cannot stand against it. They don't have to overpower the adversary, they already have, we already have. Christ did it for us, now He does it in us and for us at the right hand of God. It's just interesting, see? Regardless of arguments and logic of man, we always have to come back to the simple statements of the Word. And let the Word's logic be our logic. Because, you know, this is an interesting thing. See, with logic, you can build from, for example, deductive reasoning, you can build from one point to another point logically. But when it comes to the Word, the basis, or the standard, or the initial... But when it comes to the Word, the basis, or the standard, or the initial argument of God's Word originates with God. And we don't always know the connection point from one concept of the Word to another. So our human logic cannot always connect one piece with another. The Word is absolutely logical, but the logic of the Word originates with God. And his ways are past finding out, remember? His understanding is infinite. And certain parts of his Word are untrackable. You can't track the mystery in the Old Testament, which means you can't track the mystery in the Gospels, which means you cannot logically jump from the Old Testament or the Gospels to the time we live in now. There is no logical way to get there. Except by simply accepting what God says and going, if that's what God says, that's logical. Now I don't care if that's logical to people, to natural man or not, because the natural man, what? Knoweth not, right? The things of the Spirit of God, for they are what?
Spiritually discerned.
For they are what? Foolishness unto them. Neither can he know them because they are spiritually discerned. So I don't expect Jerry Spence to understand the Word. For example, yeah, do you? Let me say it differently. Their power is my perception of their power. Their power is my thought. The source of their power is therefore in my mind. The power others possess is the power I give them. Their power is my gift. That's tremendous. When you think it through, you know, we don't want to give, why give place to the adversary? We don't want to give them a place. We don't want to ascribe any power to him. That's why we don't talk about how the devil's doing this to me, and the devil's doing that to me, and Satan is doing this to me, and Satan is doing that. Then we just keep giving power to the adversary. Here's another concept which Dr. Rarrell handled in that tape on we can, even in death, we can be more than a conqueror. Here's something tremendous, power over death and taxes. If all power originates with me, why then do not, do I not have power over, let us say, death and taxes? I have no power to destroy death, but I have power over me as I face death. See, already he's contradicted himself, because he says, you know, well, their, their power is only the power that I ascribe to them. He doesn't understand spiritual matters. So right, so already he's in an unwinnable argument with himself. We, on the other hand, have power over death and taxes. Cause we have the power of God, which is over everything. We're sons of God with all power. We don't just have power to stand with, stand and endure, we have power to conquer. However, he still makes a great point here, in another understanding, as we understand the greatness of the Word. "But I have power over me as I face death. I can face it in a variety of ways, in panic, bravely, even with the joy and anticipation of the experience." That's stupid, but, cause death isn't the last, what? Enemy to be destroyed is death, so is that a, some sort of pleasant experience? Sure, that's what Native American Indians believe, and him living in Wyoming, when you read the book, there's a lot of Native American Indian thoughts in there. Right. "How I face death is solely my power. I have no power to rescind the tax laws. It is the government's power to assess taxes against me. But only I have the power to determine whether I will pay the tax, fight the payment of taxes, avoid taxes, even evade the tax. The power of such a decision is mine, only mine. When I find myself on a lonely street at night surrounded by a mob of thugs, I might have no power to escape, but I have the exclusive power to determine how I will react to their threat. I may be afraid, but I have the power to determine how I will deal with my fear. I can run, I can turn and face the mob, I can argue, or fight, or play dead. In the end, no matter what the situation, I am the source of all power for me." Not true, but an interesting point in light of some of the things we're working, that you can renew your mind and you can decide what you're gonna do in the situation, how you're gonna handle the situation. This we know, are these new tapes? We know that. So, no, all power does not originate with me. All power originates with God. But in our day by day living, in the practical aspect, that's a tremendous concept. Tremendously powerful. Well, we're gonna finally get now to... The chapter on, "Are you limiting God?" In your blue book, and we're gonna put together this combo power pack. Do you get that Jerry, power pack? From God's Word.
Page 21.
Are you limiting God? Jesus Christ, boy, here we deal with this name, this is fantastic. "Jesus Christ is the sweetest name I know, for it is in his name and his name alone that I see the unlimited possibilities in man." Get that? Get that? In his name and his name alone. Unlimited possibilities, unlimited possibilities in man because of the name. It is in his name and his name alone, not Jerry Spence, not Garland Harris, not anybody else, but the name of Jesus Christ. It is in the name of Jesus Christ that men are, men and women are saved, born again, converted. Look at that. Eternal life in that name, see that? Saved, born again, converted, in that name. It is in the name of, that's, I don't know how long I was just talking about that. In the name of Jesus Christ, eternal life. It is in the name of Jesus Christ that the sick are healed, to rise up again and declare the glory of the Lord. It is in the name of Jesus Christ that devil spirits are cast out, and people are forever freed in body and mind. Forever freed in body and mind. Unless we know that name of Jesus Christ as a vital, living reality in our lives, we are most definitely limiting God. Are we limiting God from being God? We're only limiting God in terms of the power of God in our lives, and his ability to benefit our lives. Here's another tremendous thing. See, if you're Jerry Spence, and you refuse to ascribe any power to God, then you are limiting God. You take the power of God and disperse it elsewhere. I thought of when I was reading this book last night, what it talks about in Timothy. I don't remember now if it's 1 Timothy or 2 Timothy. But it's that expression, "Having a form of godliness, but denying the power thereof." How do you like that, huh? Here it is. 2 Timothy 3. Verse 1. "This know," in the Greek, it's "know this." Also is not in the text. "Know this, that in the last days perilous times shall come, shall set in. For men shall be lovers of their own selves."
Oh Jerry.
Yeah. Covetous. There's that greedy thing. Greed, greed, men are gonna be greedy.
Bo-
Boasters. Proud. Blasphemers like he did in his book. Disobedient to parents. Who would have thunk that that would be in there, huh? Unthankful. Unholy. Without natural affection. Homo trip, lesbian trip. Bestiality trip. Child abuse pornography trip, all that. Truce breakers. False accusers. Incontinent. It's not talking about losing your water. Fierce. Despisers of those that are good. Traitors. Heady. High-minded. Lovers of pleasures more than lovers of God. Having a form of godliness. It's religion, this man is very religious. As a matter of fact, on the back of his book, I'm not really doing this to pick on him, you don't have to pick on him. But this is from Dan Rather. "Jerry Spence is one of America's last true originals. A man who thinks as brilliantly as he lives, who writes as compellingly as he talks, and who practices law as faithfully as most people practice religion." What is his religion? Law. No, his God is himself. The law is his religion. "Denying the power thereof from such turned away." "For of this sort are they which creep into houses and lead captive harmless women." Silly women, harmless women. Remember, this is the word, this word for silly is harmless, and the word for women means harmless women, whether they're male or female. Almost I shared that with you before. See, it's not just women. It's a wonderful usage here. I don't remember if it's a figure or not, but it's a word that means, it's harmless people. But you know, you think of harmless women, you know, the weaker sex, so they say. If you live with one for 19 years, you wonder if that's true or not. I don't know if they're, they're not weaker, anyway. But... I don't know if I'm explaining this well, but Bullinger has it in there kind of put together well. Harmless, they are, whether they're men or women, they're harmless people, see? Not just women talking about here. Here, I have, yeah, give me that Bullinger. Bullinger just has in here under silly women, the Greek word. Guinekerion. Guinekerion. A diminutive form of yine. Yine, yine, sorry, yine. G U N E, which the U would be pronounced with a Y, and the G like gyro. So it'd be like, yine. Used as a term of contempt. See, it's not just, he says used as a term of contempt. But yeah, harmless women. Not smart, not sharp, but it's not just women, that's the thing. It's male or female. This word is used for male or, or female, this expression. So harmless people, see, simple people, guileless people, harmless. Not so savvy or sophisticated. Laden with sins, missing the mark, laden, boy. Led away with divers lusts. They creep into houses. Divers lusts, see? Again, you may think of just sex, but it's beyond sex. Lust begins where need terminates. Ever learning, wickedness, it should be stuck inserted. Ever learning, ever learning what? Wickedness? And never able. Oh, surely, maybe sometime able, no. Never able, well, never say never, well, the word says never. Who started that? Never say never. And never a-